To allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hurrah. Okay, can we please have roll call?
Of course, Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner is absent. Councilmember McCafferty?
Present.
Councilmember Armstrong?
I'm here.
Councilmember Greenow?
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here.
And Andrew McGuire, town attorney, is present remotely.
All right, introductions, presentations, and proclamations, we have none. Mrs. Town Clerk?
Call to the public. Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for call to the public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration, and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. I did not have anybody turn any speaker comment cards in for call to the public. Did anybody want to speak? That did not. Submit one. Don't see any.
All right, nobody. We're moving on. Current events summaries and reports. This item is for information only. The mayor and any council member or town manager may present a B summary or report of current events. If listed below, there may also be a presentation of information requested by the mayor and council, and questions may be answered. No action will be taken. Status reports by mayor and council regarding current events. I was given this and asked to announce that the American Legion Post Forty is having a dance, a Halloween party on Friday, October twenty-ninth. It's open to the public from seven to ten P. M. Um, it's at Highway eighty-nine and Road Three South, in case you didn't know, and it's put on by the Lionesses. Is that correct, Chloe?
Yes.
Okay, so there you go. I don't see a ticket or charge. Oh, admission is ten dollars. And it's featuring Sky Daddy and Lonesome Valley, fifties and sixties classic country. So if you've got nothing to do, go on down. That's all I got.
I'm gonna try and read this real quick. I did not know this until today, but I thought it was share-worthy. Um, October twenty-sixth is the Day of the Deployed. The Day of the Deployed is a national holiday founded by soldiers' angels to honor all the brave men and women who are deployed. It is also a day to acknowledge the families they are separated from. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I did not know that. I wanted to share it with everybody else, and I'm done speaking.
Nothing, John?
Couple things here. Um, this Friday night's senior night for our football team here at home, so please come out and support our seniors.
And then go to the dance?
No, you're not invited to the dance.
Oh.
There's no dance. It's just senior night. It's not homecoming. It's senior night.
At the American Legion.
Oh, okay. Oh, that. I don't think the high school kids are gonna wanna go there. So, yeah.
At least you're cute.
And on November thirteenth, uh, there's a college career fair at the high school from ten A. M. to two P. M. So please join us for those two events.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, nothing to report.
Okay. Uh, status report by town manager Cindy Blackmore regarding town accomplishments and current or upcoming projects.
All right, thank you, Mayor, council. I have a couple of items. Um, first, I'll start off. Our city clerk would like to announce that, um, they will have the nomination packets for the August second, two thousand twenty-two primary election available beginning Monday, November first, two thousand twenty-one, so that's this coming Monday. If you're interested in running for mayor or a council seat, please schedule an appointment with the clerk's office to pick up a nomination package. Um, the second announcement, I want to recognize our, um, finance department, uh, Mr. Joe Duffy, our director, along with his team, um, won a distinguished award, and I'll just read this off for you. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the town of Chino Valley for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June thirty, two thousand twenty. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet high standards of the program, which included demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So just wanna thank that team and recognize them for all the hard work they had to put in to make that happen.
Good job, Joe.
And last but not least, here's a picture of our new playground equipment. It is finally installed and ready for the public. Um, if you haven't had an opportunity to go out there and take a look at it at our community center park, um, please do so. It, it really looks so nice. Um, what a great addition, um, for our, our children out there, so, um, thank the team for getting this done, and, um, it'll be a great addition for us. Just wanted to recognize that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Tom, I wanna back up a little bit. I forgot. I skipped over you. Did you have anything, Tom?
No, I don't, sir. Thank you very much.
All righty. Item five, consent agenda. Excuse me. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Anything you'd like to pull on this side? Yo?
No.
Tom?
Nope.
All right, well, entertain a motion.
I will make a motion. We approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, and F as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, action items. The council may vote to recess a public meeting and hold an executive session on any item on this agenda pursuant to A R S thirty-eight four thirty-one point oh-three A three for the purpose of discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public, and no action may be taken in executive session. Six A, consideration of possible action to approve the professional service agreement with Can- I almost said Canoe, but it's Caney LLC for construction management services for the new police station in the amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty cents. Ms. Blackmore?
All right, um, good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight I'll, um, be playing the part of, um, our public works director, so bear with me. Um, he would be here if he could. Um, the item before you is a professional services agreement. Oh, it's not on. Sorry, technical difficulties. All right. All right, so this is, um, a service agree, uh, construction management services. So last, at our last town council meeting, council approved the police building construction contract. So now as we moved, um, onto the new construction phase, it is, um, we are looking to ensure the project is properly managed to really protect the interests of the town. And so that is why we are bringing this before you. This is something that you haven't seen before. But after much discussion with staff, I mean, it's clear to us that, um, our current resources, um, we don't have current resources to properly manage this project through the construction phase. So, um, we went out and did an extensive search to look, um, for a firm or a person to, um, come on board with us and, uh, manage this project. We went through the newspapers, websites. We even advertised to have a temporary employee come on for a few months, and, um, it, it turned out to be a very difficult process, so we turned, we reached out to our contacts and, um, Stro, um, Architecture recommended Caney, uh, LLC. Um, they, um, come highly recommended with a lot of experience, extensive experience, um, in managing construction projects of this type. So, um, they, um, will provide the following services. They'll act as the town representative during the construction, provide all the support and advice we need as we move through the projects. They will be on site, probably an average of two days a week, some more, some less, just depending on what's happening in the construction phase. Um, they will coordinate all the weekly and bi-weekly progress meetings, which will include documentation of those meetings, which is very important as we move through the, um, construction. And they will always also be responsible for communicating and coordinating with our contractors, our architect, designer, and, um, coordinate our third-party inspections as we move that process. And they are also gonna assist us with procurement of our furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And it should be noted that, um, this proposal was based on an eighteen-month construction timeframe, which is what, um, we have right now with the, um, construction firm. Um, it may be a little more, it may be a little less, so that will need to be adjusted as we get closer to the end of the contract. So with that, staff is recommending that you, um, approve a professional, professional services agreement with Caney LLC for the police station construction management for an amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four sixty-eight forty. And I'm here, um, to answer any questions, as well as Representative Chad Hafstrom from, um, Caney.
Caney. Any questions on this side, gentlemen?
No, no.
This side? Just one. Yes, sir. Who's the direct report? You or Public Works?
Um, it will be a team, uh, Public Works will be the main, um,
Will be the lead for the city.
Manager, but it will be a team effort on all of the departments as well.
Okay, Tom, you have any questions?
Not a thing, sir.
I'm sorry?
Not a thing, sir.
All right, thank you. No further? Motion?
All right, I make a motion. We approve the professional services agreement with Caney LLC for construction management services for the new police station in the amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty cents.
Second.
Motion main, second, and twice. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That hurt my soul.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six B, consideration of possible action to approve the Perkinsville Forty-four final plat phases one, two, three, and four to divide approximately forty-four point three acres into a hundred and sixty-two lots with an average lot size of approximately, excuse me, seven thousand square feet. Applicant Craig Helsing, Brown Homes, A. P. N. Three oh-six, one eight, zero, zero, nine, H. Will.
All righty. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. As read the item before you is a request to approve the final plat for Perkinsville Forty-four located on the northeast corner of the intersection of East Perkinsville Road and North Road One East. The applicant and developer is in attendance this evening. The proposed plat consists of approximately forty-four acres and one hundred and sixty-two lots. There are four phases contained within the proposal. Phase one, outlined in green in the bottom right-hand corner, consists of fourteen lots and will also house the model home complex for this proposal. Phase two in purple contains seventy-five lots. Phase three in blue, thirty-three lots, and phase four in pink contains forty lots. All lots will have an average lot area of seven thousand square feet and will be connected to town water and town sewer. The development features a central open space for the community that will include amenities such as a pergola, gas fire pit, and walking trails. Road improvements along Perkinsville Road and North Road One East will also be constructed, which includes sidewalks along One East and a meandering multi-use pathway along Perkinsville Road. There will also be sidewalks within the subdivision on one side of the road. The Perkinsville Forty-four final plat meets all of the requirements set forth in section five of the U. D. O. Main access will be via East Perkinsville Road and North Road One East. Development Services and Public Works have completed a review of the plat and stipulate, or comfortable stipulating the remaining changes. Any substantial deviation of this plat will need to be brought through, um, for council approval. That being said, the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the town council for the Perkinsville Forty-four final plat with the associated stipulations and attachment A of the staff report, or any additional stipulations that the council would like to be made in addition to that. With that, I will open it up to questions or discussion.
Do you have a copy of stipulation A, whatever that was?
It should be within the, yeah. It's, I think, several pages.
I think it's page, page one forty-one.
I'm sorry, if anybody has any questions, if you wanna start, please do so. Annie?
Yeah, I have a ton of questions.
Absolutely.
Um, I think I need to get actual glasses now. Um, I have a couple of safety concerns.
Sure.
And I know planning and zoning, I went back and I watched the meeting. They had some current concerns as well. Um, and I just need some clarification on the entrance off of One East. Is that in line with? Show me the road.
Yeah, let's pull this back up here. So it is in line with Adams.
Which is the one and a half lane.
Correct.
Okay, so how, what's the plan for that? Cause it goes straight through to the highway.
Correct. So as of right now, there weren't any plans in conjunction with this development.
Okay.
The, I'm, the assumed envision of access is coming in through Perkinsville and then up to Adams to connect into there. Or so, uh, Perkinsville to North Road One East and then into Adams to the subdivision. Cause this road will act as an extension of Adams.
Oof.
They're not completely lined up. I'm sorry.
Um, I'm sorry, what were you saying?
They're not exactly lined up.
They are.
I thought they were offset.
No, so they were originally through the pre-plat, but that was a, um, condition that was addressed.
Okay, so my, uh, concerns there are with the people, um, that live on, why can I not remember the name of the road?
Which one? Adams?
Adams. I keep thinking James. Um, with the people, because cars parked on either side of the road.
On Adams?
On, uh, yeah.
Okay.
All the time. Um, so, I, I need to put this out there first and foremost. I'm not against this project. I think it'll be a great asset to the town. Um, and if we are gonna do a subdivision, I think this is the way it should be done. Um, I have serious, serious safety concerns regarding One East and Perkinsville Road. Um, I drive this road five, six, seven times a day.
Absolutely.
Um, and so there is a stop sign, um, going east and westbound. I'm sorry, uh, north and south, but not east and west. And so we have the roundabout going through past One East without a stop sign there. There's no crosswalk for, assuming there's a hundred and sixty-six kids on a low number. There's no way for them to cross the road safely to get over to the community center, ball fields, and aquatic center. Um, I know we've talked and kicked around some ideas on that. Um, I'm not putting this on the developer specifically, but that, in my opinion, we need to figure out a solution, wha-, um, whatever that may be, to provide safe access across that road. The trucks coming down, the sand and gravel trucks, um, general traffic, they do not slow down, and, um, my concern is, um, there's gonna be a kid hit on that road. And, uh, I don't mean to say that as like a scare tactic. It's a genuine concern, and I don't see a resolution um, as far as in any of the designs. I know they said they were gonna work on landscaping and whatnot, um, to deter that. But when a kid wants to go play at the field or go swimming, there's just no safe way for them to cross the road. Um, and with that, I'll yield.
Would you like me to address, um, as much as I can?
Yeah, it'd be great.
Absolutely. So, um, in regards to the Adams concerns, uh, there, there were no, there's, there was no discussion in regards to improving Adams west of this development. Um, the applicant's extension of Adams will be to town code. It will have, um, a level of sidewalk and road improvement surfacing, um, but nothing was stipulated even through code for Adams, um, as it's not an adjacent roadway to this property's boundaries. Um, in regards to the intersection, which, um, is absolutely a valid point, um, it is, it is a huge concern. And staff has looked into this as well as the applicant. They did a very, um, extensive traffic impact analysis and traffic impact study for this area. Um, they went through, oh, I've got the nomenclature here. They used the manual of uniform traffic control devices to address this intersection, um, and there were four warrant studies that were conducted in which all of them did unfortunately prove, um, that there was no need for that four-way intersection or a crosswalk. They do have plans on inducing, or introducing pedestrian signs that they're in the area here within this development. One will be located to the west of the intersection, and then one will also be located to the west as you progress further, or sorry, to the east as you progress further through the development here on the either side of Arden, their new proposed internal road here. So it'll act as a warning, um, for pedestrians in the area. It does not, per the T. I. A., it did not recommend that a four-way stop or a crosswalk be installed. However, with that said, in discussion with the applicant, he is more than willing to install a cross, a crosswalk or a star, um, four-way stop here if that is council's decision tonight. Um, we can have it to where you direct staff, or stipulate it to where staff, uh, looks into this, and that at the discretion or the determination of the town engineer, the applicant will install X improvement on this intersection.
That's very generous of the applicant. I, I understand that's not their responsibility. Um, oh, so I'm appreciative of that. Um, at the discretion. Okay, so here's where I sit. We have X, Y, and Z things approved on down Perkinsville Road, Old Home Manor. Lots of growth and development out there. The roundabout, One East, and then it's open road. That's great. That intersection from where the dog part starts and One East, or on West, East, One East, that whole area, there's, there's nowhere to cross, period. So if the entrance is gonna be off of Perkinsville Road, this Arden Drive, their new road, um, is that where a crosswalk is considering? Like, I'm very concerned, like, sincerely concerned about this.
Uh, the, the proposal would be at the intersection of North Road One West, East, i- is where we would start, um, a- at the determination of Frank, what, what he concludes at. I- if there's something in the middle there, um, it's absolutely something we can look into. I know a large concern is in regards to where Arden comes out here. If you look at the lower left-hand picture, i- it crosses into a ditch, and it, it's at least three to four feet below grade of road. Um, so there, there's really not much to, and then you've got the fence here. Obviously, kids, they're spry. Um, so that, that's really nothing to them, but there is a deterrent factor just based on what's existing on site right now on the town's property.
But it wouldn't be difficult to put in a pedestrian crossing and open that fence, is that correct?
Would it be difficult, or would?
It would not be difficult for, for the town to do that.
I would assume that it would not be a difficult undertaking, um, but I'm not Public Works, so.
Okay. Well, I thought that there was discussion once. About strobe.
No, go ahead.
Oh, about strobes. They were talking about a strobe crossing.
Uh.
I thought, I, I thought, I recall Frank bringing it up either at P. and Z. or during a previous council when this was originally going through.
So I think it was a topic back during preliminary plat. I cannot, it, it obviously didn't go forward past the preliminary plat. And I, I think it had to do with, uh, traffic impacts study not supporting that. But if that is something that we wanna look at, absolutely, um, stipulate staff to.
Does it, it just seems like that would be the logical place, because if I recall, there's gonna be a path, right? There's gonna be a walking path that comes on the Perkins exit, and it'll go along Perkins going west.
Correct. So we've got, a- as you can see within this diagram here, there's a meandering concrete ten-foot multi-use pathway that goes along the span of this project on the southern boundary.
Um, and then maybe a strobing crosswalk right there at One East and Perkins.
If that's, yeah.
I mean, it, it just seems like, boom, everybody would be aware, oh, look out, look out. This is where if there's kids coming, they're gonna go.
Got you. So I know the, the applicant has stated that they are doing everything they can to deter as far as even angling the ramps in a north, um, angle, or northern angle to deter that, to help, you know, funnel it to the wa- the path. Um, they're also including heavy, you know, heavier landscaping and boulders to try to funnel that as best as you can onto that pathway.
Will, could you back up a slide so we can see where Arden hits?
Yeah.
I'll back up again. There.
So you can't really see much.
So the turnoff to the dog parts down here by the right corner in there, right? Okay. Were you guys done over here? Annie?
Um, why? I'm not real happy with the, we'll see what happens.
Okay.
Answer. Um, and that's not a reflection on anybody, um, specifically, but that's just kind of been historically an issue of.
Sure.
We'll get to it down the road, and then down the road happens, and nothing is, you know, um, resolved. So the traffic impact analysis that, um, did not say that it warranted a four-way stop. Did that traffic impact analysis, analysis also include the already planned projects at Old Home Manor and, um, legacy?
From my understanding, no. It was in respect to current conditions and then proposed with this project.
Okay, so that's kind of my concern, council as a whole, is that there's lots of development going on, and that's fantastic. But this intersection is not safe. It's not, it's not safe now to cross, and it, and it surely will not be safe, um, with a hundred and sixty-two homes. So that's my concern, and I don't know if you can address that, if we can, you know, we can direct staff to study this matter further and bring it back to us. Um, it's just not something that I will sleep well at night knowing that I voted on without having that addressed.
Mayor, if I may, um, so um, probably our best direction right now is to have staff, direct staff to study the matter and bring it back before you for discussion. And then we would be able to pass it on to the applicant once you've agreed to, um, or are comfortable with, um, the recommendations that we bring back to you.
Will, who, who did the, uh, traffic analysis?
Oh, S. W. T., and I believe they are out of Phoenix. Yeah.
Yeah, I think somebody else should do that traffic analysis also, cause I drive down, uh, dump truck down to Charter, and I mean, there's a lot of trucks going up and down that road, and I'm, agree with Annie. I'm not happy with the conclusion that they came up with.
Okay, absolutely.
What, and the weight of the, sorry, the weight of the trucks themselves, they are not gonna be able to stop quickly if they see a little kid running across the road.
You can't even see a little kid when you're in the truck, so I.
And that hill is great momentum for them. Okay, I'm done. Promise.
Chloe, you have anything?
No, I'm agreeing with everybody's concerns.
Okay. Uh, Tom, you have anything?
Nope.
Did Tom go away? Tom's gone.
Appears we have lost Mr. Armstrong.
Okay, thank you, Will.
Sure.
All right, we have a comments. Now we're gonna open up a public meeting, and I declare the meeting open. Do we have any comments for the public meeting? She'll get you just a minute.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first, we have Mr. Greenow, I believe is how you pronounce it. And on his speaker comment card, I will let the council know that he is not a Chino Valley resident, town limit, Chino Valley resident.
Okay. Come on up, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor and council members, thank you for hearing me. My wife and I moved to Yavapai County in two thousand and seven. We bought two and a half acres outside the city limits at Mangus and Escondido Trail. It was paradise. In the last three years, I've watched the traffic increase, and I know there's a drain on our water and our power, and I'm very disappointed about this development. The developer will go off and retire somewhere else with forty acres. Nobody will even remember who he is. But the ambiance of the rural area that I live in has changed dramatically in the last three years. And I just, I think if, if somebody's gonna subdivide property, if they have twenty acres or more, the minimum should be two and a half acres subdivision of a twenty-acre parcel or bigger. You're gonna have a lot more traffic on Perkinsville Road and One East, especially during the construction phase. The roads are both One East and Perkinsville are narrow, and, uh, I was here at the. I was here at the zoning commission meeting a month ago on the fifth of this month. And, um, it's just a shame. You're going to lose the, the antelope that are run wild. First visit to the property that we bought. We'd been looking for a year coming up here from California. And we bought a two and a half acre piece in par- in Paradise with a nice view. And now I have nine new neighbors, but at least they're all living on two and a half acres. So I'm just strongly opposed to this. I think we're going to pay a dear price. This is just the beginning. And I would hope you'd vote against doing this. It's, uh, I think it's wrong for the area, a hundred and sixty-two homes on seven thousand acres, seven thousand square foot lots. You're going to have at least two people live in each of those houses and a lot of kids. And Ms. Perkins is concerned about crosswalks and safety. Perkins, uh, Road One East is a pothole mess from, from two north to three north, and it's probably beyond that. It needs work and it hasn't been taken care of. And putting a crosswalk in is probably essential if you're going to go forward with this, but it's just a, it's just a drop in the bucket to the problem. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll let you know that, uh, Councilmember Armstrong, it appears has rejoined, just doesn't have his mic on or his video yet. Next up, you're welcome, is Mr. George Sch- uh, Schleiler, Schaler.
Good old German name. Oomla over the, or is it E? I don't know. We had a disguised dad when he came over on the U-boat. Uh, I'm a school bus driver and I go down, uh, One East and it's a hassle. Uh, we have parents parking on both sides, the territorial school. You can, you can hardly get a bus both going both ways. The intersection on Perkinsville and East is a disaster waiting to happen, in my opinion, especially if you try to go over their school bus, because we're turning the bus and we have to take two lanes because of the bus. Can you imagine a construction company that's going to be going through there? This intersection needs to be vastly improved, enlarged, aggressed fur- furtherly, further. It, it, the way it's, uh, showing right now, i- it does not meet, uh, the requirements of the people that are going to take their kids to school or for that matter, the traffic that's to bear. If you've ever been down that road, it's full of potholes. And I've seen, uh, cars almost from the school to One North backed up. Okay. And there are many times when parents are picking up their kids and they're going east or west, uh, no, I mean, north or south. It's a disaster waiting to happen. As far as the narrowness of the road, the ditches on the side, uh, when you make a turn or try to make a turn and, and, uh, quite frankly, a lot of people don't like to give the bus the right of way. It's like, uh, I, I, I don't know, it's a stigma. Oh, we got to get ahead of that bus, you know, he, he's stopping for kids. We can't let those kids, you know, take time. We got to be at our jobs or whatever. So that intersection, I fully agree, ten times more than what you stated. And getting a bus through that intersection is going to be very difficult most of the time. It is now. When we make a left turn or right-hand turn onto Perkinsville or it, it's a disaster waiting to happen. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Very short and quick.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, I will let you know, uh, Mr. Schaler's speaker comment card did list that he was a Chino Valley town resident.
Okay, thank you.
That is all I have. Um,
One moment. I'm sorry.
The, um, applicant is also present.
Do, does he wish to make a comment?
I think that's a call that maybe you and council could make if you would like to hear from him.
Feel free. We'll listen to you.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Craig Helsing with Brown Homes, as you know. And, uh, lived and been, you know, through the process here and we certainly understand, uh, the concerns with the traffic at the intersection. There's no question that that road is busy. Uh, I'm not here to try to minimize any of those concerns. I would like to, uh, address them as best that we can, uh, to try to help the problem and be part of the solution as to what we're doing there in the area. It's a great area with the park, the aquatic center, the school. I mean, it just, uh, I ju- I just think it's going to be a really good, um, um, extension of Chino Valley in that area right there. So as, as, uh, as Will had alluded to, we have already, uh, committed to uh, doing a crosswalk or a, yeah, a crosswalk and a, and a four-way stop there at, uh, Perkinsville. Uh, also, we, you know, we are responsible for widening Perkinsville and Road One, uh, on our half of the, of the intersection. So the intersection by default, not during construction, obviously, that'll be a challenge. But once construction is completed, the intersection on two of the corners will, uh, well, on one corner, but two streets will be widened to full width, which should help the left, right turns onto Perkinsville. And then if it is deemed, uh, necessary to put the four-way stop in there, you know, even when I was there again today, because I, every time I come up here, I drive the site and try to hit it at different times of the day so I can understand the traffic patterns. Um, it's difficult when you're on one, stopped at the stop sign, trying to turn left onto Perkinsville. I mean, there's just, you, you got to wait. So it's, it's not surprising at all that there would be a line of traffic during school. You know, that would be clear back to the school with people waiting to, uh, to be able to safely turn on to Perkinsville. So I think the four-way stop helps that because it gives everybody their, their turn at the right of way. Um, it won't alleviate at all, but it should help everyone get their equal turn. Um, anything else we can do, we would certainly be willing to listen and, uh, and try to be again, a part of the solution. So I just look forward to hearing what, uh, what you might have to, to, uh, to give us and then for, uh, town staff to review and get their recommendations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Okay, we're going to close you up in the public meeting and I want to go back to Tom. Did you have anything you wanted to say, Tom?
I apologize. My connection blinked here. So if I'm repeating something that somebody else brought up, I apologize. I completely agree with Vice Mayor Perkins on the positive note that needs to be done. I like the idea that they want to defer traffic to make them go north to, if there's a crosswalk at One East and Perkinsville. I know myself as a teenager, if you put a rock in the way, I'm going to jump over and go play in the ditch. So I don't think that's going to cut it. We might have to put a secondary crosswalk in that area. And I agree with Councilmember McCaffrey that, uh, the blinking light formation, I think would be a good thing.
Thank you, Tom.
That's it for me.
Thank you. Okay, we gave her her comments.
Just, the project, as Vice Mayor indicated, is a perfect location for our town. It's within walking distance of their central business district. It's going to provide, in my mind, affordable housing to hopefully new police officers, firemen, teachers. And it's within walking distance of where, so the project's good. The safety is a concern. So it just seems like if the project can go forward with implications that we can say, hey, town staff, we, we need to rectify that four-way stop issue. You know, maybe that's what we can do. I don't know if there's a way we can do a motion where we can allow the project to continue to go forward, knowing that there's going to be amendments to it, i.e. maybe a four-way stop or a light or something.
Okay, sir. Right in.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we, um, continue this, uh, to our next regular meeting with the changes, um, included of a, at minimum, a four-way stop.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. You opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item six C, consideration of council action to approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eleven ninety-four, disbanding and dissolving the Town of Chino Valley Senior Center Advisory Board, Cindy Thomas. Well, there you are.
I have to move this. Good evening, Mayor, Council and Staff. Uh, Mayor, you will be very pleased. I have two slides and the first one only says Town of Chino Valley Senior Center.
Good.
All right, you can go ahead. Thank you. So I'm here before you tonight to, um, discuss the disbanding of the Senior Center Advisory Board. But first, just a little bit of history. As most of you are aware, the Senior Center was built in nineteen eighty-five and that was built after many of our community members were conducting business in their homes of preparing and delivering meals on wheels. They went, then went to NACOG and asked for funding to provide the meals. And then they came to the town asking for CDBG funds to build the building. In nineteen ninety-one, the advisory board was created along with their bylaws and through the years, there's been many changes. Um, the latest change was in two thousand and sixteen, which went from having standing committees to liaisons as the board so chose. In twenty nineteen, the board asked for that current administration or the current administration of the town to look into being made into a committee rather than a board. Some of the functions of the advisory board is obviously to serve at the pleasure of the council, but to also be liaisons between staff and our participants. To plan activities and trips and special events along with staff and to give suggestions to staff regarding nutrition planning and implementation of example, uh, implementation of menus. For example, about seven years ago, we were creating our menus. It took about two to three months, depending on the menu, for it to proceed. So it would go through advisory board, through staff, then to NACOG to be approved, back to staff to make adjustments, back to be approved. And so we are working on June menus sometimes as early as February. In two thousand and fourteen, we started using our state nutritionist through NACOG for our menus. There's no planning, there's no processing. It's simply looking at a menu and saying, okay, we're serving roast beef tomorrow. It's very easy. And so one of the functions of the board was canceled due to that implementation of a policy and procedure. Some of the justifications for disbanding the advisory board is to be able to have them fulfill their duties better as a committee rather than a board. Since two thousand and eighteen, January of two thousand and eighteen, we have had thirteen advisory board meetings. If my math is correct, there should have been forty-eight meetings in that timeframe. Now granted, we did not have any meetings in twenty twenty. We're talking about the most vulnerable pa- population and it just was not wise to hold meetings. Out of the meetings that were canceled, they were canceled due to health concerns, weather, and the biggest one, lack of quorum. And as you all know, if we do not have a quorum, you cannot have a meeting. You cannot discuss, discuss business. And so things that need to be done at the senior center are not getting done because we do not have the, the meetings to implement the, the planning processes that they, they want to see happen. As a committee, they would be able to do that. They would not have to worry about a quorum. They would not have to worry about agenda di- agendaizing, um, talking about a trip to a Diamondbacks baseball game or whatever it is. They can meet when they need to. They can meet at times that are convenient for them rather than a time that a piece of paper says they need to meet. By having a committee rather than a board, I do believe that there will be more participation from our senior population. With that, staff does recommend to approve disbanding the Senior Center Advisory Board through resolution. Does anyone have questions for us?
Any questions on this?
No.
How about y'all? Tom, you have any questions?
As I understand it, Cindy, the, the board, the present board and everybody wants to do this and make it a committee rather than advisory board?
Yes, sir. Our board president wanted to be here this evening, however, she is out of state.
Well, so am I, so that's okay. Yeah, if that's what they want, I see no reason to send it, not send it forward. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. And with that, I will make a motion. We approve resolution number two zero two one dash one one nine four, disbanding and dissolving the Town of Chino Valley Senior Center Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Cindy, is the town doing a Halloween?
Yes, ma'am.
I figured as much. Could you give us?
Saturday, October thirtieth, Memory Park from two to five. Please join us for our annual Halloween event, uh, through the Town of Chino Valley Recreation Department. Just to let you know, we have changed things up just a bit this year, obviously the date and time. So going forward, we will be having our Halloween event the Saturday before Halloween of each year. This year, we're taking a gamble with the time. We're doing a two to five event rather than a evening event. We're going for more of a carnival theme so that we can entice those younger families that, that want to get their children out safe and for an event that isn't necessarily at night in the dark.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Memory Park, correct?
Memory Park.
Saturday from two to five.
Two to five.
Two to five. Perfect. Thank you.
Mister Mayor, I think Mister McGuire has a guest. Mister McGuire has a guest that he would like.
You finally brought him again?
The command performance. You've been asking for him.
Wow, where are you, Andrew?
I'm at home. I'm dog sitting while everybody else is off to a concert tonight.
Oh, what's a picture of behind you?
It's a green screen. He can pick whatever picture he wants.
That's actually a photograph I took on vacation in Croatia.
Ah, nice. Pretty nice. Thank you, sir.
Highly recommend it.
Thank you.
Maybe when I'm an attorney.
All right.
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Doesn't matter. We're closed. Good night, guys. Thanks. Bye, Mike.
We don't have anything after this, do we?
Good night, all.
I told my family I wasn't going to be home till eight o'clock tonight.